You may shoot me with your words. You may cut me with your eyes. You may kill me with your hatefulness, but still like life, I'll rise.
I refuse to accept the view that mankind is so tragically bound to the starless.
Well, hello everyone. Aw, I already got it. We love you early in the show. Welcome to the Black News Beat, everybody. I'm so glad you're here. Welcome to our first Sessions with the Candidates. Ooh, Sessions with the Candidates. We are so excited to have some wonderful candidates here tonight. It's been a minute since we've been together in this space, about a month. But we hope you've been staying plugged in and watching our Catch Candidate Forum coverage. We went to all four of the Catch Candidate Forums. Let me tape them, so if you need to catch up. They did City Council, they did the Mayor's race, they did the judges, they did Prithontary, they did Clerk of Courts, and they did the Coroner. So please go ahead and check that out. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Tonight, we're back for something special, our Sessions with the Candidates. A space where people seeking to lead Harrisburg speak directly to you and you and you and you. No spin, no soundbites, just vision, values, and accountability. Now, before we dive in, let's take a moment to ground ourselves. Today is the International Day of Pink. Anybody ever heard of that? International Day of Pink. A day to take a stand against bullying, homophobia, transphobia, and all forms of hate. And in that spirit, we also pause to acknowledge the heartbreaking story involving Carmelo Anthony, who tragically took the life of another teen accused of bullying him. It's a heavy reminder of how deeply pain runs and how urgently we need community care, healing, and spaces for our young people. So just want to make, take a moment to acknowledge that. It's also National Poetry Month, a time to celebrate the words that move us, lift us, and call us to action. So we listened to tonight's conversations. I'm hoping that you hear just not policies, but I'm hoping that you hear possibilities. So let's get into it. Let's sweep this street. Let's see what's going on. Well. Oh, there's a, there's a sign in front of my face. Yeah. So does anybody know what is happening on May the 20th? You're all too quiet. What's happening on May the 20th? Thank you, thank you. You can talk back at the show. This is the Black News Beat, and we want your talkback. We want you to talk back to me. I've asked you questions. I do want you to answer. You too online. You should answer too. And take a moment, we are streaming live online, and share that stream, okay? Take a moment and share the stream. We want your Harrisburg compatriots to see it. We also be talking about some national things, so please go ahead and share that stream. This is very important for us to make sure that we are really actually up to date and up to knowledge on what's going on. So, did you share the stream? Gib, did you share the stream?
Yes.
We do this every week with Gib. Gib is not on Facebook. But I ask him all the time. So yes, definitely share that stream. Thank you so much. Back to municipal elections that are happening on May the 20th. The municipal primary is less than 60 days away, guys. Oh my goodness, it's actually coming up on less than 30 days away in about 10 days. So with the general election to follow in November. Here in Harrisburg, the stakes are particularly high. Voters will have the opportunity to cast their ballots for several key positions. So we have Come and Please Judges for the County. We just had a Catch, just had a Candidate Forum where Zugay, McShane, and Williams showed up. We believe there are, I think there's, who's the other one? Lord help me. But he ain't come. What's his name? What's the one? Charo. Thanks. See, nobody knew but me this time. Fran Charo was also invited. He did not, well, he was not able to make it. He had a conflict. Clerk of Courts, candidates Tina Nixon, Jimmy Pianka, and, I'm sorry, Tim Pianka and McDonald's are running. We have Prithontary, Carreno and Crupp are running. Coroner Harris and Hedrick are running. Mayor of Harrisburg, Mayor Wanda Williams is seeking reelection. City Treasurer Dan Miller is up. City Council Lamont Jones, Community Activist Tom Cook, and perennial candidate Louis Butts Jr. Now that, I didn't write perennial, but it's true. All right. So that is coming up. I want you guys to make sure, I keep leaning out the frame. I want you to make sure that you are up on all those. That is one. What Harrisburgians can vote on, that's one, two, three, four, five different seats. That's a lot of stuff. And that all really dictates your quality of life right here, every single day, living in the city and living in the county. So please make sure you vote, make a plan to vote, get out to vote. Make sure that you take your neighbors and friends and family to vote. We have 30,000 registered voters in the city of Harrisburg, and sometimes we only get 10 to 15% of those voters to come out. Some maybe, sometimes 25%, possibly, but usually it's only 10 to 15%. Usually for the mayors and the mayors and the, the city council will see, when they're together, will see a bump. And for the presidentialists, we'll see a bump. But if it's not those two years, we don't see a bump. And those two years are back to back. So make sure that you are getting your folks out to vote. People are voting these days, and they're getting ready to vote. I believe that. And I, I'll tell you, there was a lot of demonstrations about the current state of things. And as, as I will always say, this show is a, this show is a partnership. We sit at Open Stage, we have YPOC members. But you know, all thoughts and things are my own, is my personal. But we have a lot of people who are really dissatisfied with what's happening with the country, terrified even, right? Some people are raging with dissatisfaction. They're losing wealth. Right? Terrified, right? Tariff, tariff. Thank you. Thank you, Ralph. Where's his food? Just kidding. Y'all don't know where that's from, do you? Okay, but Ralph is just telling me he's old, but that's okay. We still gonna have him here for interview. We still gonna have him here. So yeah, so there's a lot of things happening. And we actually, this past weekend, there were demonstrations all across the state and all across the country. I actually spoke at the one in Harrisburg about voting and about how even our electors are under attack. Even our elections are under attack. They just defunded the Elections Protections folks. They just, they are getting ready to, and they're voting hopefully, probably tonight on the SAVE Act at the federal level, which is supposed to put more barriers on voters to vote, right, by requiring these extra IDs and these things that, you know, a lot of our disenfranchised voters cannot get or have a hard time getting. But they are citizens and they're already registered to vote. And in a lot of cases, so keep your eye on those kinds of things. We also have school proportions. We have all the city council seats. There are 12 people on the ballot for the city council. We also have city controller. So I lied. How many is that? I think that's seven things you get to vote for. So that's a lot of things that affect your life that you should definitely be voting on. These elections will shape the trajectory of our city and its institutions. It's imperative to stay informed and practice actively in the democratic process, especially because as we heard a, we heard a pundit say today, "We are watching democracy become extinct before our very eyes." Right? And that means that we have to participate. If we are not participating in our elections, if we're not participating, we are, as Ronald Reagan and, you know, Ronald Reagan said, "We are only one generation away from the total undoing of democracy at any point in time." So take this as seriously as you can. Okay, that's right. Now, well, well, he did his part to undo it. Yes, he did. Okay. Oh, we have Ronald Reagan fans in the audience. Oh, no, we don't. We don't say Ronald Reagan out here. Okay, we don't do that. Okay. The Tales of George Hartwick. Now, I know y'all been studying, watching the news, and you've been watching the news. I think Penn Live wins the award for the most articles written about George Hartwick. Commissioner George Hartwick. There are at least 14 articles, and you can go and catch up on them. Literally building a library on this commissioner. Meanwhile, all eyes are on our county commissioner George Hartwick, who is currently under scrutiny following serious allegations tied to recently driving while impaired and showing up to the commissioner's meeting a few Wednesdays ago, appearing to be under the influence. While the full story is unfolding, and unfolding quickly, the case raises deeper concerns about transparency, trust, and leadership at the county level. So we'll break down what's been confirmed and what's on an investigation as the time goes by. But tonight, we want to save more time for our candidates. And what I, what I want to say about that is I, I want you to exercise your right to, to your First Amendment. Just understand that when we elect officials, they are there to represent us. And it is hard for an elected official to be fired, right? It's an impeachment process. So you have to, you as the voters have to hold your elected official accountable at every turn and make sure that they know what you expect of them. And that's what I'll say about that. Let's move into media and melanin. This is my favorite segment. And I gotta just bring it up a little bit and talk about media and melanin, because Boss Air and I have been watching some really great shows, and we want to talk to you about them. So Watson is now fine, okay? Who is watching Watson on, what is it, Paramount TV, babe? Yeah, CBS. Anybody watching Watson? But Morris Testa is playing Watson, guest of Sherlock Holmes and Watson. And it's a great premise. Sherlock Holmes has a terrible accident. And now Watson is running his medical practice, and he's got cool stories to figure out. So you should watch this. It's really cool. So Watson is a new twist on a classic thriller from the universe. Now centering Dr. John Watson, played by the always charismatic and, again, I mentioned, fine, Morris Testa. Watson no longer is just a sidekick. He's solving crimes, facing personal loss, and rewriting what it means to be a black man in the mystery genre. He's also a very prolific medical doctor. So yes, it's hitting all the notes. Black doctor, it's hitting mystery, it's hitting deception and betrayal. You gotta do that. You gotta get into it. It's really good. Next, onto the illustrious Uzo. Who hasn't been watching The Residents on Netflix? Y'all just making out. So good. What's that? What? Will, oh, Will Trent. Oh, yes. Okay, well, I don't, I don't disagree. Okay, I don't disagree. So The Residents, sorry, Uzo Aduba is, it's, let me just say something about what we know. She is brilliant in The Residents. It is another mystery thriller, and she's playing a, called Kofelia. Yes, and it's giving scandal energy with a new spin, because it takes place in the White House. The series dives into a fictional murder investigation and all the political secrets that come with it. Bold, it's smart, and it shows just how dynamic black women needs can be when given a fully developed narrative. And that's what I love about the show. They really build her out really deeply and really delving fast in what kind of person she is and how she comes to be the way she is. So I definitely say give it a watch. You'll love it. I posted up on the Black News Beat page, like, I finished it in a day, because it's that good. And if you finish it in a day, that means you spent, you spent about 12 hours of your day, because each episode is at least 15 minutes long. And there are eight episodes, but the last episode is like an hour and 20 minutes long. So definitely check that out. It's got a lot of great storylines, and I think you'll really appreciate how it kind of leads you down some erroneous path. Brings you back. So I like. As always, we're talking about how there's nothing doing here in Harrisburg, so I want to dispel that myth and tell you about what's coming up. So, and I know you guys have some other, and I'll ask this in a second. I know you guys have other events that are coming up that I want everyone to hear about. So first, as always, I'm gonna tell you about Juneteenth, because Juneteenth HBG is 66. The first event is 66 days away. What? You know what that means? That means, that means fridge is around the corner. So, and that's another thing we're getting ready for. So let me pull up our site. I'm going to juneteenthhbg.com, and it comes out of the home of the pandemic. And I want to tell you about the great events that I have on June 14th, June, June 21st. We have the first ever black parade, Juneteenth ABG. Yes? Shout out to Eris Smallwood, our parade coordinator. She's going through, I love her, supporter, Senator Texas, but we love you. It's gonna be great, because she held off beautifully. Entertainment from the city of Harrisburg and coming from afar, you are free. Only folks that have to pay the $75 fee are for-profit businesses. Everyone else is free. Please get into, get into, come and help us celebrate this in a brand new way. The city of Harrisburg will have banners going up, will have different information all throughout the city, so that you'll know that parade is coming. Oh, yeah, so it's going to go through the Old Age Ward and around the Capitol. And if you know anything about the Old Age Ward, that is our historic black ward right here in Harrisburg. That was raised to build the Capitol, if you don't know. That's right. It was not dilapidated. We have the, our wonderful, your legendary people here, and also a council member and incumbent candidate, Johnson Rawls just told us that the story goes that they said that it was dilapidated and needed to tear down a whole entire neighborhood. Incorrect. It was not dilapidated. People were thriving there. And it was raised to literally build the Capitol. Imminent domain was not a grant to those people. They did not get what they were, their just do for their homes. So this is, this is the history that we want to remember, and that is why we're going by the age board. Right? So please, please support us in that parade. We want you to. One day, Juneteenth, we're going to do our five pigtails with the Kendrick Lamar concert. We'll be there from 4:00 until the start of the concert. So please come, if you guys, I know y'all saw them take it, stay tuned. All right. But go ahead and come to the tailgate. You ain't got to pay for that. You may have to pay the part. But you ain't got to pay for that. Our wonderful sponsor iHeartRadio, who every year do wonderful things with us. And we've had such a great partnership. They're gonna be letting us do people a stage, and we're gonna get talent on that stage, and we're really gonna have a great time. So we're really excited about that. We're gonna be a Topic Tuesday on Tuesday in our VIP reception. Our Topic Tuesday will be led by none other than Buster Vincent. He's giving current events, and we'll do like a live, a live-in in person. And also our VIP reception. If you are VIP or you feel that you're VIP, you can get a ticket online to come to the reception. On Wednesday, we have our Juneteenth HBG Summit. This is one of my favorite events. We are gonna have some prolific speakers from all across Pennsylvania and the capital region coming up with us about amazing episodes they're doing, all themed for Juneteenth. Things like safe paths, like healing, things like mental wellness, things like health. So we want you to come and check that out. We have a wonderful, even broadcast journalism. We have a wonderful, wonderful slate of panelists for you in session. And I can finally at least announce it, or do you want to know? Do it, okay? So we have some wonderful, we have some wonderful, wonderful guests to be back. Mike and Eric, so he's back. He is like Uncle Mike at this point. He's gonna be doing a power panel for Juneteenth. That's gonna be our main day panel, along with Cory Myers, a prolific lawyer. Yes, serves in the, she is a mental health advocate. She does a lot of amazing work. And we also have Congressman Al Green, who's set up, yes? Yes, yes. Who set up and exercised his First Amendment rights, not to overturn the United. We will be watching for, hear his story, that's right. Hear his story and to make sure that we honor his work. So we're really excited to have him. And listen, it's gonna be June 18th on Wednesday. You know, it's a tough morning. Just come here. And then afterward, we have, if you can't take off work, the keynote will be at 5:00 PM right at the Harrisburg University. June, or September 6:00 PM, Harrisburg University, June 18th. Be there the whole day, so come and join us. And then on Thursday, we'll have our Juneteenth HBG Jubilee, albeit Soldiers' Grove. On Friday, we're gonna have a Taste of Black Paris and the Juneteenth Black Party at Soma. And then we will have the 24th, so we are at Juneteenth HBG concert. And I will wait till, till we double, triple confirm our artists. We're gonna be really excited about the artists as well. I can't give it all away in one sitting, okay? I can't give it all away. So thank you guys for sitting. There's nothing to do here in Harrisburg. Also, check out the YPOC from YPOC. For more information. And we always have happy hour the last Thursday of every month. Elise, where's happy hour this? Do you know? Somewhere. Don't get you lying. I know. But just check out the site. We'll have it there. And you can come in. Come in. Thank you. Collab 28 is where we're going to have our, our Juneteenth, I'm sorry, our YPOC last Thursday. Happy hour, so we started to go wrong right in front of the team. That's okay. Next time, just go behind this way. Yeah, just go that way. Yeah, there you go. Perfect, perfect. Okay, that is what we have. Did y'all enjoy the first segment? I got it done in 19 minutes. Are you proud of me? And we'll be right back with our first city council candidate, Elise Ervis, and we'll be right back. Full disclosure, I am helping to manage a fleet that has two candidates, and Elise is one of those candidates, so full disclosure on that note. I never want to be non-transparent. So I want to ask you more about what inspired you to step into this race? And what personal experience you do bring to the table?
Hi, I'm running for city council because I love Harrisburg. I know, I think Harrisburg is the best place to live.
It'd be great. I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I genuinely believe that. I didn't always.
Yeah.
From Harrisburg, grew up, born and raised, I graduated from Eastside. And at the time, I was determined to never come back here. For sure not my 20 or 30. Right? I couldn't imagine, you know, living in what I thought was a small town. They didn't have this, didn't have that. Not what you know on, on TV. For young, college, professional, young. Very nervous school, so I left. I went to State York, lived in New York City, lived in Philly, DC. Came back to Harrisburg, 27, 8, and I can have everything that I, that I enjoyed and loved about the communities that I had lived within. Even lived in South America for a half a year. I found those things immediately when I moved back to the United States. So that's why I'm running for city council, because not only is my vision to attract or investment in dollars to our community, it's also. Think that so many of us, just it wasn't enough to us to stay. Look like, what would you do? What options did you have?
Yeah.
So I'm super active and eager to create more opportunities, absolutely, for young professionals, for, and for all ranges of adults as a whole. We just finished this. For Harrisburg.
Yep, yep.
So, and that's same thing.
I love it, love it. And what, what's your vision for youth engagement? Or public safety, or something of your own? Those are the ones that kind of rise to the top for Harrisburg. They talk about the youth, the youth, the youth. We also talk about public safety, public safety, public safety. So what, what is your vision in those areas? And how do you foresee yourself on council being able to address that?
Yeah. It's valid, right? Those come up time and time again as concerns. And I plan to bring what I'm uniquely best at, what my, my unique position is that I have lending background, banking background. I've been a business owner for about eight years now. I'm a nonprofit and both profit side. And I genuinely believe, you know, my number one, my number one issue is economic realization. And in that way, with a laser focus on, I plan to address youth and public safety programs, more programming, more opportunities. Again, not just marketing opportunities, but creating the opportunities. We'll come in and be able to hit the ground running by my network of public and private, a lot of public partnerships on, like, keep our youth out the streets today. Right? Where they go to school, where they go on the weekends. Those things are often sustainable long-term, because they're at such a high level that private partnerships are. That's what we need for our community. That's what we need for our economy. It creates jobs, apprenticeships. And, and with more things to do, right, with more people moving along all the different avenues, who, how many of the Cassa students or how many of Union John Harris students know that they could come down here after school and get involved in that? Spoke to the little school students, she wants to go to art therapy junior, and she had never heard of this. Right? So there's, there's disconnect between what we actually have, what is here, and our community.
Absolutely right. Absolutely agree with that. And I know that, working with you over, also disclaimer, we worked together for almost decade. It'll be coming up in 2017, so eight years. And it has been a journey. We've been building color together. She's also a chief administrative officer. She's responsible for membership and running our committees and just general, making sure that, you know, we don't fall off a cliff at most points. So we're very proud to have her. I know that you know that our town of Harrisburg has been a huge source of contention for all sectors of the city. What kind of vision can you offer for adults in Harrisburg that would make people excited to work?
Well, piggybacking off of the arts and culture and economic realization. Again, I am a small business owner myself. I used to have a location two blocks down from the, currently located downtown, just around the other side of Strawberry Square, on Fourth Street between Market and Walnut. And for the last year and a half, we've been building community here in the city. We're creating space, right? What we provide is space and assistance for people to come and stay where they're at. Or if you want to be a artist, show, make some money. Some Cassa kids rent our basement out on the side of them, and they play their band plays. It's awesome for them to start learning business, what it did cost them, how much should they charge? You know, and that practice, practice putting themselves out there, their marketing. So it's really, it's my goal. I've already been doing, I'm gonna be a bit more. And that's what I'm most excited about running council, because I've never taken those and answered, right? I got kicked out of, kicked off of boards. I've lost jobs over standing up for what I believe in. And that's has always been connecting, cultivating, and celebrating professionals and creatives in Harrisburg.
Absolutely. Love it.
So, so that's what I'll be bringing. I'll be bringing. So, so that's what I'll be bringing. I'll be bringing a lot more revenue in the city in that way by more events. We talked about Juneteenth. That has been a huge effort that we have been able to scale.
Year over year.
Again, through partnerships. We literally collaborate with over 30 different organizations from sponsors to vendors, to our creatives who come in and host the events, plan these events six months out there. They're working on Juneteenth, eight months out of the year. It's a reason to stay in Harrisburg. It's an opportunity to make more money. It's an opportunity for them to have their kids to have something to do, for the whole family to, uh, be engaged. And, and again, I'll be able to do more of what I'm already doing for the city, uh, and be able to reach every community in Harrisburg.
I love it. And if elected, what would your top priority be in your first 100 days?
Harrisburg first. Um, may Carl Singleton rest in peace. When I moved back here in 2017, I was in the lending space. He really let me stand behind him as he bulldozed, um, through, through walls and barriers that he had already knew I was going to face as a junior lender, working, uh, to serve black and brown businesses through the, uh, CDFI that I was working with. Uh, and I wanna, I'm gonna continue that. Uh, my grandfather also, um, Kayla Ware-Irvis, the Irvis name may ring a bell. He was our first black speaker of the House of Representatives here in Pennsylvania. Uh, you may be familiar with that Capitol complex, Irvis Wing is named after him. Um, again, those are things that, uh, I was in, a legacy I was inherent, inherited and planned to build off of. So, so yeah, my first hundred days, I am hoping to create, um, or update, um, policies around putting Harrisburg businesses first, spending with Harrisburg businesses first, providing training and workshop and support. Spaces, building blocks for Harrisburg businesses first. And, and that, I believe, is the lens that we need to be looking at as council who are mainly in charge of our annual budget. Right? How can we prioritize and route capital to, to, to us back in the city reinvestment?
I love it. And lastly, tell everyone who have they can reach you and tell folks why they should vote for you.
Listen, I'm really excited. You're not just going to hear from me tonight, Elise Irvis. Uh, but you can connect with me directly, eliseirvis.org. Uh, and I am happy to meet with folks. I spend most of my days and hours around the corner at La Cultura, 19 and a half North Fourth Street. Um, you can stop in and say hi. I'll treat you to some coffee. And, um, unitedhbg.org is all of, um, our upcoming events. I'm going to have coffee at 8:00 AM at Elementary Coffee. That's Bossier, Vincent and myself. And that's this Friday, 8:00 AM. Um, next Wednesday, we're having a mixer at La Cultura as well. Uh, we'll be back at Elementary Coffee, I believe, next Friday, but there's a bunch of things. So connect with us, um, at one of those events that you'll find at unitedhbg.org. And what you're gonna get with me as a councilwoman, I hope to earn your vote on May 20th. I'm number 10 on the ballot. And I'm going to, I am, you, I am all about collaboration. I'm running with, um, Bossier Vincent. He's number two on the ballot. We're tending to as United Neighbors for Harrisburg because that's how, how integral collaboration is in my candidacy and my platform and my ability to lead and, and, uh, in the future government of the city. Uh, so, um, that's what we need. We are in dire need of elected officials and leaders who prioritize collaborating, who prioritize working together, who prioritize, uh, working with different govern, um, different bodies of government.
Yeah.
Right? We're not just going to get the stuff, we can't just spend with Harrisburg businesses if I only focus on what council can do. If I only focus on what the mayor can do. We have to reach out to the county officials. We have to be in a coalition and community with our state and legislators. Um, so yeah, please connect with me. Stop by, come see me, eliseirvis.org. We're looking for people who want to get involved. If you want to learn more just about, um, voting, about council, about civics here in Harrisburg. Uh, we have a ton of opportunities, uh, especially with YPOC. So stay in Harrisburg, y'all. Vote May 20th. Primary elections. If you have questions on that, we got you too. We got some voter registrations. It's still time. It's still time. Every vote counts. Your, your opinion matters. What you're doing here in Harrisburg, it's valuable. It matters.
I love it. Thank you. Thank you to Elise for sharing with us for a few minutes. Um, we stick around for a little bit and, uh, and, uh, we will be right back with our next candidate for city council, Bossier Vincent. Thank you again to Elise Irvis. She said she is number 10 on the ballot. Thank you very much, Elise.
Call 911. I'm just gonna pass through, okay?
When minutes matter, you have the power to save a life. Learn more at minutesmatterUPMC.com.
Yeah, you look handsome. Welcome back to the Black News Meet. We have our next candidate up, Bossier Vincent. Welcome, Bossier. I want at the top of the interview to state my very clear bias because this is Bossier Vincent. He's my husband, okay? Um, but, and he is running for city council, but way beyond being a spouse of mine or connected to me. He is a wonderful, wonderful candidate for city council and I want you to learn all about him. So hello, Bossier. How are you?
I'm doing good.
How's it going?
Uh, it's going good.
How's the race going?
Um, it is, I am enjoying it. This is my first, uh, my first round of going for public office. Um, I'm enjoying the conversations that I'm having. If anyone knows me, I do a lot of research. I do a lot of reading. And so being able to, you know, provide answers or pathways for people is, is fun for me because it's constant problem solving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, um, so you've been visible in the community long before this campaign. How does that grassroots experience shape your platform?
Um, it, it really is the trigger for it. Uh, a lot of what I'm doing now is because of the work that I did with, around the comprehensive plan. Um, I collaborated with several individuals from the community. And that research provides me a foundation for these answers that I'm providing. Or, you know, honestly, a little bit of my frustration because, you know, supplying information to people, trying to inform people is one thing, but then being able to be in there and take action is something that I think, you know, I, I feel was missing from the steps that I was taking. But, um, being able to work with so many different people and organizations, I feel like that foundation allows me to speak more confidently about solutions that need to actually happen.
And what are some of the things you're, you're talking a lot about, you are kind of echoing some of Elise's points with collaboration? And I know you guys are running together. Um, but what are some of the, the things in the, in the community that you are talking, what you have done that have prepared you for this moment?
Um, so the first big one, uh, well, obviously we founded YPOC.
Right.
Young Professionals of Color. Um, that was, you know, and not just us. It was a group of friends. It was a group of transplants who got together. Um, so, uh, you know, for the record, because people always love to say, I'm not from Harrisburg. I'm from Plainfield, New Jersey. And actually, I, I, I fell in love with Harrisburg when I moved out here. Uh, we moved out here around 14 years ago. Every time I take some years off, it always gets mad.
I'm like, why are you telling people?
It's 14, 15 years. So that we've been out in this area. And we started with finding YPOC. We had a chance to work with the school district. Um, we worked with Adopt a Classroom. We worked with Boundary Maker Space. I worked with the STEM ecosystem in Pennsylvania. I've worked with the People's Budget. I've worked with, um, Recycle Bicycle. So I've worked with, um, I'm not even going to do justice if I try to like list all the community organizations that I had the, the privilege and pleasure of either working with in some way or another, volunteering with in some shape or form to help, you know, move on with their mission. So all of those experiences, but the big ones that led me to city council were the Harrisburg Comprehensive Plan Community Working Group. And that was, that was a big initiative. That, we created more than 200 hours of content, breaking down Harrisburg's comprehensive plan. I learned a lot. I, you, you don't have time. I got 10 minutes. If anyone, because sometimes people say, well, what happened with the comprehensive plan? And I have to be like, well, in 2016, and then again in 2019, and then, and, and it gets very convoluted. So learning all of that is the advantage that I gained from all of this work. Is that I learnt that history. I talked to so many people, people that were at community sessions way back in the early twenties, um, in the early tens out here, that were trying to rebuild this comprehensive plan. And it, and it's that's the energy that I'm really trying to tap into. Sometimes I have to even be careful with saying comprehensive plan because the version that came out in 2020 was a watered down version compared to what the community came together and built. And there was still a lot of frustration about that document not being what it could or should have been.
Yes.
So it's that experience that helps me and informs me in my platform that I'm using for city council.
Absolutely. Um, so what gaps in city leadership are you hoping to fill if you get elected?
Uh, so a lot of the biggest ones are, uh, planning and execution, right? I come from manufacturing. One of the biggest things in manufacturing is you gotta have measures and then you gotta hold people accountable to measures. And not in a bad way, but in a way where you grow. And I always say grow because it's goal, reality, options and what's next. And there are so many times where I feel or I see, you know, the, the, the people at city council, they start to, they start to ask a question. Right? Hey, what are, what are your metrics? And they get a, oh, we're, we're, those aren't here yet. Right? And that, like, to me, that's not an acceptable answer. You have to have a metric. I could provide metrics. I've seen the work that gets done. I get happy when I see certain people throw out metrics. You know, I'll give a shout out to the city council members. When I, when I hear them say a metric, right, I get excited. Right? When Ralph's like, hey, we hit this many tons on Hot Spot Saturdays. I'm like, yeah, do that. You're going to see a lot of that from me. There's going to be a lot of measures and metrics. Hey, what are our homeownership rates? Where are they at now? This is where we're spending our money. This is where we think we're going to improve this measure. Because yeah, you do have great vision and I have a vision. A lot of people have vision now. But in order to take a single step towards that vision, you then have to turn that into a metric. You have to have something that you're measuring yourself against, not just, well, I did everything. No, you didn't do everything. You were short of something, but let's use that as an opportunity to identify where we're going to improve next time. And that goes with everything. That goes with how your budget dollars are spent, where your money is. Um, I did, when I did the work with the People's Budget, they said it's a moral document. Because where we spend our money is where we think we're going to improve things. And the people want us to be accountable. They want leaders to be accountable. And that's what I'm going to bring. I'm going to bring that level of accountability because I have a methodical nature that makes me connect a metric. And even if that metric is wrong, then, then let's review it. Let's come back around and let's circle around. Why isn't this measure as good or what we expected? Okay, what did we learn from this experience? At least have that dialogue. And that's what I'm going to bring. I'm going to bring that ability to one, frame that. Bring the legacy metrics, because again, I'm not just pulling these out of nowhere. These are metrics that the community wants. And I'm going to find those. And I'm going to, uh, you know, work in the fullest capacity to make sure that we're constantly, not just having a stagnant metric, but a metric that is important. So if it's homeownership, then yes, let's start there and let's improve that metric. And then it might be dollars spent on a program and then let's see how that affects homeownership. And then let's draw the line. And then if we need to adjust, we need to adjust. But I'm going to bring that, uh, that ability to think in this way, the ability to draw those connections and the, the ability to use those tools in order to apply it week to week.
I'm going to, you know, my opinion is going to be biased. I'm just being like. How would you work to bridge divides? So now we talk about the gap that we know that, that, that there, there's always a gap, right? But how would you work to bridge the divides on city council, um, so they can get things done?
Yep. Um, it, it, it's one of my favorite acronyms and every world is acronym heavy. It's always figuring out what's in it for them, right? I, there is one thing that I, I could say this about this city. Your leaders want to do the right things. Right? Like I, I have, I have, we even fight, like, I won't throw everything out. We even argue about this all the time. I truly believe that there are a lot of people who their heart is in the right place. And they want to do good things for this city. Now, I think they might fail in acting that. I think sometimes certain ideas get in the way. I'm going to help bring people on with that, with that ideology, right? I, at the very least, I'm, I want to make people look good. If you're working around me, I'm going to make you look good. You know why? Because we're going to identify the measure. We're going to share it publicly. And then we're going to do what it takes to achieve it. And then you're going to have a win under you though. That's what we want to do, right? And that, that is, that is the thing that I'm going to keep finding because it's people power. I really believe in people power and if people keep doing what they're doing, right? People power corresponds to votes, but you gotta, you gotta connect it. What's in it for them? What's in it for you? What's in it for the constituents? And tying those all together, right? Because ultimately it is the same thing, right? Like if I can accomplish these things, if I'm saying, first step is if I'm saying I can accomplish these things, people should vote for me. Then if I start accomplishing them, people should keep voting. And that is, that's the way politics really should work, right? You should hold people accountable for the things that you're asking them to do. And then you give them a chance to explain why, hey, again, things can't happen overnight. Sometimes there's unforeseen obstacles. So you're not always going to hit everything, but being able to communicate with other people and say, hey, I can work you through this. I can solve this problem for you. I can work with you to get over this hump that caused you to not necessarily fail, but not quite hit the target that you were trying to hit.
Absolutely.
And that's, I'm going to reach out to everybody. Everyone who knows me knows that I'm going to do that. Um, I, I try my hardest, even sometimes to my detriment, to stay away from kind of personal attacks, anything like that. And I think that helps allow it to be easier to people to see me as someone who can collaborate. Someone who's not going to be biased, someone who's not on team this or team that.
Team the people. Yeah.
Team the people.
I love it. Thank you, Bossier. Um, let everyone know really quickly because, uh, he has, right? Um, so the, uh, our wonderful game has already called time, but let people know really quickly how to get in contact with you and, and why they should vote for you.
Absolutely. Well, you should vote for me because as a leader who has done a significant amount of work collaborating with, you know, other leaders in this community, I'm someone who can take us, provide a vision and move us forward in a place where you might feel stagnated. And of time that is difficult, we need leadership that is competent and capable, capable and accountable. And that's what I am going to be. You can reach me at bossiervincent.com. You can reach, um, us and again, running with the slate and Elise Irvis, at unitedhbg.org. You can reach me on Facebook. Um, you can even reach me at bossier.vinson@gmail.com. I'm, I'm out. I'm out. I try to be out in the community. Um, you can see us at Elementary Coffee this Friday. And we're going to be hosting a series of events from now until May 20th and even onwards. Um, I'm usually at YPOC happy hours. Uh, I try to get out as much as possible, uh, especially now. But you can find us, you know, online at any time and I'm pretty responsive.
Thank you, Bossier. And we are going to be right back with our next, um, guest. Please give it up once again for Bossier and his wonderful interview here. Fantastic job. We'll be right back.
Calling all members of the greater Harrisburg community. We need you. We would love for you to join the YPOC and become a part of our leadership team. Would you like to join our board and get great perks and access in the community? Think about it and let us know. We'd love for you to contact us as soon as possible if you are ready. You can email us at info@ytoc-hbg.org.
Yeah, it's, it's good not to always.
Well, we are back and we have a giant in the building, ladies and gentlemen. Please welcome a councilman, Ralph Rodriguez. I hope you liked it. How you doing?
Arctic King. Good to see you.
It's great to see you. I feel like I haven't seen you in so long.
I think it's been a few hours.
Been a couple hours. It is wonderful to have you here. Um, how, how are you doing? I know you've been, this is your, you're entering your fourth year on council, right?
Uh, yeah.
Wow.
First term, wrapping the gun.
Time flies.
Re-election, absolutely.
Time flies. I remember when you were running, we was running around these streets outside. Um, I am happy to know you. I'm happy you get to sit with us today and talk about the work you've done. We're, and just let you guys know, somebody inboxed me and said specifically, why did you wait and invite Ralph and not me? And I said, I invited all of you. You know who you are.
Shout out to you.
And I just wanna say that all the city council candidates who wanna be on the show will be on the show, so don't worry about that. But today we have Ralph and I want to talk to you about just, um, the work you've been doing, also a little bit of reflecting on your time in office. So thinking about that, what's one policy that you're proud to have supported and why?
Proud to support it? Or I'll say, uh, proud that I drafted, which will be Resolution 10 of 2025 now, which will be Hot Spot Saturday.
Yes.
Um, unanimously supported by council, plus it was a promise that I made to the community when I first ran. So I, I like to say, you know, when politicians run, they fill the constituents up with, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. They get the seat, they get tucked away. You, you barely get to meet them or reach them. I'm, I'm confident in saying the four main things that I said I wanted to do and achieve for the city my first term, I did right away. Uh, and one of them was actually become a homeowner right here in the city, cause before that I didn't own a home, I just rented. But Hot Spot Saturday is an initiative that I partnered with La Shwama. And we were able to remove 150 tons of illegal waste and mitigate really what it looks like in the city of litter and just tires. And I mean, you name it, but we did that voluntary base off of the city dime, which means we saved the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, not only on billing fees, but on labor costs. And we did that, we did that just, you know, up the strength. And, and, and as, uh, the other, not only, um, Elise and Basir, um, they were right when they say it takes collaboration. Because it's one thing to say, you know, when you're, when you're first out, when you're running, you're gunning, you're naive, I'm gonna do this, I promise you, I'm gonna be that one. And when you get to the seat, you realize it takes everything but independence. You have to work with people. You work in silos, you're doomed. You're doomed. You get, it's seven people on council. And you have to work with everyone and team build with everyone. You literally have to be a family up there. And then you have to be creative. How can I be creative and form other things? So the parent task force, you know, I, I worked with the mayor where, um, the late, great, uh, rest in peace to Carl Singleton sat on that, uh, committee, as well as Mayor Wanda Williams, um, the previous superintendent for the Harrisburg School District, Mr. Terman, as well as myself. And we invited students from the Harrisburg School District and parents to come in and actually be able to grieve to the people that can make changes in their life on a monthly basis on every Wednesday. It was the third Wednesday of the month, I believe. We had guest speakers and people from drug and alcohol that could actually be right there after the meeting and assist them directly. So it's one of those promises for the youth, for the families, and as well as the businesses in the cities, you know. But Hot Spot Saturday is one of those things that I see, not only sustainable, that could be really game changing and just really elevate and be scaled moving forward.
Amazing, amazing. Um, so some community, community members feel that council has not gone far enough on housing. What's your response to that?
I mean, council, I wanna say the city, uh, as a whole, because there's a little bit more we all can do. Uh, ideally, so if you take the unhoused population, you, most residents say Ralph, why isn't it so hard to just take one of these dilapidated abandoned buildings and put them in there? That is a great point to make, but also who will run it? Who will be the fiduciary? What entity, what nonprofit will run it? What the training will be specified for them to run it? Who actually can actually get this thing moving? Um, housing, affordable housing, to be certain. So it was one of the things that we all fight for, uh, Councilwoman Rawls will tell you, just like when they approved the tower project that's now building by PennDOT. One of the main questions I asked was, love it, but two things are confusing. You're naming, naming, naming it after nine 11, but there are no first responders involved in it. You're making it better.
Interesting.
Specific, right? So that's kinda misleading. But also, we asked something simple in the beginning of your unit. Can you just put an outside shower like they have at the beaches, maybe a restroom? Because what we don't wanna do is take any more disrespect or push the unhoused population out. What can we provide them resources, somewhere where they can come in, maybe bathe, maybe get some education? We were shot down immediately.
Wow.
Oh yeah, we were shot down immediately.
I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We, that's on the record. That's on the record.
I said, you saw that?
We, that's on the record. Uh, that's one of the first questions I asked. I wasn't even.
The same people who's doing the veteran house.
I wasn't really supportive of the project because of that. I said, well, how do you intend to work with our unhoused population?
Yeah.
We're gonna build a wall. That's what they told us. So they turned into Donald right away. I don't know, they just, that's exactly what they went to. We're gonna put a wall up so it's not.
What?
So these are the things I wish the residents, the constituents would see and pay more of a keen eye to because.
So you want people to start paying attention to these city council meetings?
Oh, I mean, just a little bit, just a tad bit, right? Because the things we say on record, they're on record for a reason.
That's right.
And I mean, we have people from our administration all the way down saying one thing three years ago, that a year later, completely flipping. I'm like, not what you just said last year, but how can we run with this for the betterment of the city? Because at the end of the day, it's not about you. It's not about me. It's not about personal vendettas. How can we actually turn this into something for the betterment of the city? I get what you're doing in your angle, but how can we make sure the residents benefit from this and so on? And the same thing with, um, the gentleman Henry Hill for the CAGA, the, the, um, was it the Green Belt, Josie, the Green Belt Association? They were gonna stiff him with over a million dollar fees to rewrite the Green Belt just because they wanted to do that project.
That's right.
I was against that.
That's right.
Henry, I understand what you're saying. You wanna go with the project, but how can I consciously make this decision and vote in affirmative? If we know you're gonna be foot with the bill and that's gonna fall right back to the residents.
Facts.
If they have theirs put together, let's put this together in totality. How can we move forward and vote on this? But that's kind of what they expect council to do from time to time. Things that are not completely put together, things that are kind of subpar, they still want an affirmation and then you just go home.
Interesting.
I can't rest that night like that. I got five kids I'm still raising. Two are in college, two are on their way to college and got a freshman. So, you know, not only am I a cougar, graduated John Harrison 03, you know, just all the residents that I go door to door and make my knuckles bleed when I bang on those doors, I owe them every little bit that I could do. Because I've done a lot in my life, but having, serving juvenile life replacement from 1917 and a half, you learn a lot of survival skills that don't just kick in normally. So when you get people to actually go and vote for you, that's huge.
Yeah.
That's who, you're actually putting your name up for me. That's how I look at it. I don't take it for granted, right? So when these, I think it was like 2,000 votes that we got last time, um, me and Josie coming in, the first two vote getters for 13 candidates, we owe every single one of those and even the ones that didn't vote for us. Cause although I might not respect what you say, and I might not even agree with it, I took an oath to defend your rights.
I think they, I think they like that. And if reelected, what unfinished work are you most eager to continue or complete?
That's a great question. So the motto is moving Harrisburg forward. So we've done a lot of great things, paying off the Ambac deal, which had, was a dark cloud over our city for years, putting in Alexander. And although the process wasn't significant in the way they went about it, you know, we're able to move that forward. So what I would like to continue doing was really get our city out of a third class status, get us to a first class status. Whether that's home rule, whether, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to reach it.
Oh, you said the dirty words, home rule.
It's a, it's a discussion.
I'm for home rule.
It's a discussion that we cannot keep avoiding.
That's right.
And what's happening is we're not getting all the incentives, we're not getting all the tax breaks, we're not getting a lot of things, including loans that we can be getting from broader banks. Because we're a third class city. And because of that, I feel like there's some people, and I won't name names, I won't name what departments they're in, that are in a comfort zone because we're in that third class city and they'll keep bringing it up. Well, third class city code, Rodriguez. But we can change that.
We can change that.
So the fact that we keep, you know, doing this time and time again, and I mean, we can go as far back as Reed. You know, we put in the munis, um, application where everything should be up to date, up to modern times, but they still prefer to have an old school paper trail. Why is that? Things to make it go.
I can tell you why, but I mean, we won't go there tonight. Um, thank you. So with your minute that is left here, please tell us how we can contact you and why should people reelect, reelect Ralph Rodriguez?
I just feel like it's not long enough, one minute. So I, I, I'll be honest with you, we've done it all from leading protests that actually got two House bills in, 1841, 1910 with former Governor Wolf. We've won every award from governor down to mayor to just getting inducted into who's who in 2024. So I mean, being a council member that actually brought now an award winning initiative into city council, we just got the K P A Beautiful Award for Hot Spot Saturdays. I just wanna produce more, create more. I'm a thinker, I'm a mind. And as Basir always said, you have to set smart goals, have to set smart goals. So, you know, um, number one on the ballot, if you wanna reach me, rrodrigues@harrisburgpa.gov. I always give my personal number out, 717-686-5691. Residents blow me up all the time. I think I took three calls on the way here. But that's a part of the job, although they say it's not a full-time position, you're dead wrong if you say that. It is more than a full-time position. You'll get calls when you're with your children, you'll get calls while you're at work, you'll get calls nonstop, but you owe that to the residents. So please look, uh, look for your support, May 20th. Um, you have four decisions to make. Please make sure you're doing your due diligence. You have a lot of local elected officials looking to get elected and support you. So just know, also, it's really important before we go, please know what our role is as a legislative body. Sometimes they come to us for things that maybe the commissioners need to handle or something that an administrative role needs to take care of. We're not saying we won't help you. We're gonna get you to point A or point B, but please be patient with us. Don't butter our heads off. Cause sometimes it just comes with a little bit of education. Dr. Camique Campbell, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate you so much. I mean, that was okay. Give a little bit of a, a little bit of a round of applause here. And we will be right back with our last city council incumbent candidate, Ms. Jocelyn Rawls. One more time for Ralph. Thanks for being here. We'll be right back.
La Tiendita is Harrisburg's premier store for everything Ecuador. In this store, you will find a variety of cultural and traditional products and ingredients like chocolate that you can't find anywhere else in Harrisburg. La Tiendita also ships packages directly to Ecuador. If you have any family or friend, you can also do a direct money wire transfer to their bank account in Ecuador. La Tiendita is open every morning at 8:30 a.m. and you can find them at 3126 Sycamore Street, right here in Harrisburg.
Love it. Love it. Yeah. Welcome back. I'm not gonna say that I saved the best for last. I'm gonna let you be the judge of that, okay? But we are here with incumbent candidate for city council, Ms. Jocelyn Rawls. How are you?
Everybody.
Thank you for coming. I know you gotta get home to the kids. I know you gotta teach in the morning, but we're glad that you're here, gonna spend a few minutes with us.
I wouldn't miss it.
Thank you very much. Um, so first, you know, tell us about you. How are things going and how you feeling about your race?
I, you know what? I don't call it a race. I call it interacting with my community.
Yes.
That's what it is. We are getting out there. We're always out there, but it's just getting out in the community and reintroducing yourself. So I, it's going really great. Um, I always have fun with it. It's such a humbling experience. Um, I think to knock on doors, to hear people's concerns, and sometimes people have very strong concerns. They may even say, what have you done? But it's, it's very humbling. It, it opens you up and I say that to everybody. Um, I feel like everybody, one time in their life, should run for office.
I agree.
I really, I really do. It, you really open yourself up and you learn new things about yourself. So I love every moment of it and I, I just love helping my community.
And it's very humbling.
Public servant. So I'm a teacher.
Yes, exactly.
So I love it. I love it.
And Renefal is very humble.
Yes, yes.
It will humble you.
It will, it will humble you. So I, I'm loving it.
I love that. I love to hear that. Um, you have a unique voice on council. What lessons have you learned in navigating city politics so far?
I have learned that you have to agree to disagree, but respectfully. Um, I learned that with city politics and being a legislative body, um, it's a lot of reading. You need to read every single resolution, every single bill. You need to write down your questions ahead of time. Um, and a lot of times you have to come with your facts.
Yes.
Right? You have to come with your receipt.
Yes, you do. That's right.
Um, to back up why you're asking certain questions. Uh, I said, so that's the biggest lesson I've learned. And also, I think I've also learned that with city council being a legislative body, that's not where it ends. Um, residents are gonna email you, they're gonna call you, and you have to help them with things that don't deal with the legislative body, but that's why you're there. You're there to give them another avenue and you're there to give them the education, so then they can then go give it to their constituents.
That's right.
So I've learned that. I love that, cause I'm a teacher. So I love teaching and pushing out information. So I love when I can help somebody with something that has nothing to do with legislation. It could just be, hey, there's a tree that is, um, in my backyard that's almost about to fall. Hey, my sidewalk, um, is, is coming up. I don't know what to do, who to call. Hey, I have a pothole. You know, how do I get this fixed? Um, anything that I'm able to help them with, I love that part that is not just a legislative body.
I love that. And, um, cause I, I know legislating is, it's arduous work. It's not easy, especially when it comes to budget season.
True.
Um, so how, you know, it sounds like you get a, a bit of a fix, a bit of a hit.
Yeah.
Um, from helping people with those things. So that's something that I think is, I, I, I think is helpful just from a, who do you go to, right?
That's the big thing. Like, who do I call? And like to be able to give that pinpoint person and say, this is how you get it done. It's almost like, oh, like I didn't know that. Like there's so many things, like people don't know in our community.
Oh, yeah.
Like it's, it's just not visible. It's not out there and that's, I'm not blaming that on anybody, but I'm saying that's kind of the way things work a lot. And, and how do we stop that? How do we get better communication? You know, like our residents are, are dying and they're, they're, they're wanting more communication from their government. And that was one of the reasons I ran, because I didn't get the communication that I needed when I was in Harrisburg about a pothole. Like that was what made me run. I had a pothole that I continued to hit every single morning. And I was like, who do I call for this pothole?
Yeah.
And I remember calling my dad and my mom, you know, you complained to your parents and I'm like, I hit this pothole every morning. I'm so upset. And they're like, do something about it.
And you're like, okay.
I said, oh, you didn't say anything but a word.
Say less.
Say less. So I did something about it and I started researching the city government because like most, and I'm not afraid to admit, I didn't know how my government was set up.
Yeah.
I didn't understand my civic duty.
That's a lot of people.
I said, I did not do good in civic in middle school.
Well.
I didn't know what was happening.
Well, we know, we know the civics, you know, we know HBLA at least, oh, 0% of our students, HBLA passed civics. And I think only, what was it, 26% of the kids at the high passed civics, so you're not alone.
Listen, that's why I started Youth Commission, but we'll get on that.
Yes, we are.
So, um, but, but that's why I ran for council. It was the pothole and when my parents challenged me and said, do something about it. I researched, I found city council. I love how they work as a team, cause I'm all about collaboration. And I said, I'm gonna do something about it. And that's why I ran for my first term.
I love it. And so we're gonna go right, we're gonna get right into, um, one of the, one of the hall, the, the Hallmark, uh, program that you brought, uh, with you to the city. Tell us about the youth commission work.
Thank you. Uh, well, so Youth Commission was always under Parks and Recreation. It has been there for a while. However, it just had a different setup. It was more of, uh, meeting with, um, students, going on field trips. And so when I got on council and I realized I was under my umbrella, I started looking at different cities who had youth commissions. Baltimore, Pittsburgh, Tampa, and I started seeing, okay, what does their youth commission look like? And I found out that it was so much bolder and it had so much more pieces to it, more fundamental learning, more metrics. Like it, it, it dealt with more things and divested to what the youth really needed. They had a logo, they had websites, they were meeting with their local officials. I was like, okay, wait, this is what we need in Harrisburg, right? Our youth, um, they need fundamental programs. And I'm so huge on youth because I'm a teacher. So I said, okay, let me see how I can bring a youth commission. Let me see how I can create it where it is our youth understanding their civic duties, but then also pushing it out to their constituents. Their, their constituents voice. They need that. Um, and so that's why I decided to get two mentors. That was one of the reasons why I decided to get two mentors for the program who could then create curriculum, who can then choose these students from ages 11 to 18. And they will be able to interact not with just city council, but with the mayor, with Dawson County Commissioners, with the residents, with their constituents, and figure out what does our city need? How can I help? And what can I do to push my civic duty out into my community?
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so I wanna ask you something that may not necessarily be under your committee, but still as something I think is important to city council members. So in terms of economic development, it's a big question in our community. Where do you feel the city has improved? And where do you feel that it is still falling short?
I think that's a great question. Um, improvements are still needed. I think that I've seen a lot of small businesses come in to the community that haven't been there, but I've also seen a lot leave. So I will say it's been kind of a push and a pull, right? We've gotten people to come in, which helps with the economic. We've gotten people to come in, which helps with the economic development, but we can't get them to stay. So we have to step back and look at that. And I think the, one of the biggest things that we have to do is first create that education. What does it mean to own a small business? We need to create hubs to give education on that. What does it look to get capital? What does it look, um, for financing when I go up to the banks? What does it look like for my five-year plan for my business? So that I'm not part of that statistic of in five years I lose my business. So what we have to do is put people in those places to give that education. We need to give workshops, right? We need to give, um, internships. We need to give apprenticeship, right? Because that's how you pass the baton. Um, so I really want to see how do we work with the broad street market? How do we work with businesses who are already here, who can be those mentors for those small businesses who want to come in? But our other piece for economic development is how do we bring in businesses of people who don't live in Harrisburg, right? You have a business across the river, but you want to bring it to Harrisburg. That's what we need. But to get that started, we have to get housing and we have to get affordable end market value housing. Those are both very big components, right? You can't just have one kind. You have to have all different kinds so that you're bringing people into the city. How do we get it where, and I, I don't know how many people know this trend, but when someone is moving into Harrisburg, right? Harrisburg is huge, right? Just Guiana, Harrisburg, right? Central Dolphin East. Like when, when people say Harrisburg and they're saying, okay, I'm moving from New York and I'm going to come to Harrisburg. That's a huge, big thing, right? A lot of realtors don't pick Harrisburg City. But why? Our school system.
Yep.
Our blight.
Yep.
Our crime. We have to stop that. They instead, instead tell people who are moving in to go to the west shore, the central dolphin.
Did that to us.
Yes. And they forget about this beautiful city. So we have got to build up our economic development. We have got to build up our city to the point where real estate, in our school district, this, it works all together where real estate agents say, oh, you have to live here because they do. Harrisburg is absolutely beautiful and I didn't know how beautiful it was. Thank you.
It really is beautiful.
It is. I didn't know how beautiful it was until I moved away and came back.
That's what happens. Yeah.
Like, like Elise said, you, you move away. Like I was like, when I left and went to college to HVCU Delaware State University. Uh, I was like, I'm not, I'm not going back to Harrisburg. I, I was trying to run far, far away. So I went through New York for several years. And taught there. And, um, then I was like, in two thousand and thirteen, after I had my oldest daughter, I was like, I want to move back to Harrisburg.
Yeah.
And when I got back here, I came back with eyes wide open. I was like, oh yeah, this is it right here.
That's amazing.
This is it. How do I build it up? And then when I hit that pothole, I was like, I feel.
That pothole did it.
That pothole did it. But, but no, it's, it's a beautiful city. So we have to build up the economic development. If I could round it up, starts with bringing in businesses that aren't just, that aren't people from Harrisburg. They want to bring their businesses here. It's getting affordable housing. Only have like twenty-four percent of homeowners. We need to bring that up. We need market value housing and we need to work with our school district and make sure that we are working with them to get that right.
That youth commission seems to be youth poised to do it.
That's just my one thing. I want to get youth courts too.
Well, let's do it.
I'm not done. Put me back in for four more years because I have to get youth court. I'm all about the youth. Please, 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 please.
Well, you told us why we should vote for you. How do we contact you?
Those are the good to you. Contact me because I'm, um, I don't do the, um, my government email because F it, uh-uh. J J, J J R A W L S eighty-three at gmail dot com.
One more time.
J J R A W L S eighty-three at gmail dot com. You can also find me on Facebook at Councilwoman Jocelyn Rawls. I answer emails. I answer messages. I am not afraid of any issue you bring to me because I am here for you, the Harrisburg City resident. You are the reason why I do what I do. Um, I'm a public servant. I always have been. Once again, I'm a teacher. So all I know how to do is communicate and work with everybody. Because the one thing, and what sets me apart from all the other candidates, I'm running on youth. And when you are selecting your four candidates, you want to select people with different things that they're running for. That's how you get versatility. That's how you get differences. You don't want to select for people who are all doing the same thing. I am about the youth so we can pass this baton to them. They are our future leaders. So let's build them up and let's make sure when we pass the baton, they are ready. They are equipped and they are ready to do the job that is in front of them. I am number eleven on the ballot. That does not mean I'm all the way down there. Number eleven means insight, intuition and enlightenment. And that is what I'm trying to bring to Harrisburg City Council for another four years.
All right now. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yes.
That was fantastic. Um, give him, give her one more round. My pleasure. And we will be right back. The last lap. Don't try to leave her on my picture.
May twentieth, vote for Councilwoman Rawls.
That's right. May twentieth is a primary. Y'all, y'all selection will be bringing you more. I will be right back with the last lap. Thank you, Jocelyn.
Thank you. Asri Avila just published her book, Journey to Freedom, and states, if you love women, read this book. And if you hate women, read this book as well. Have you ever seen such eyes? These eyes so wise, these eyes that mesmerize. You're invited to grab a cup of delicious delightful hot tea while you read this book in order to enjoy to its maximum capacity. Welcome to my delightful world. I invite you to leave your world behind and step into mine for just a period of time. This book was written for you. You can purchase it now at delightisfull.com.
Ready? Yeah. So before we sign off, we have a game because you know what? It's time for some civic fun election trivia style. Let's see if y'all are ready for the ballot box. Are you ready for the ballot box? All right. And you can just shout out the answer. The, the prize is I will get you, um, a cup of coffee from my favorite coffee shop. I don't want to say what's my favorite is because then the other ones are going to be like, well, what? A lot, I get you a latte. If you win though, Ralph. All right. Are we ready? Uh, trivia questions. We have three, two to win. Are you ready? True or false? Judges in Pennsylvania are elected through partisan elections. True or false? Through partisan elections. True or false? True. The answer is true. Basser got it first. One for Basser here. Basser, uh, Pennsylvania is one of, uh, what? It's red. No, I didn't tell them what these were. Uh, it's one, we are one of seven or nine states in the entire country that elects our judges, uh, on either side of the ballot or outside of the aisle. So keep that in mind. We have a ton of retention questions this year. Seventy-three judge retention questions and our common pleas judges, our Superior Court and our supreme, superior and supreme and the Commonwealth Court. All have, those are state levels, all have, uh, folks who are up for elections. So do your, this is going to be a long ballot. Make sure you do your homework. Okay. Next question. How many justices serve on the Pennsylvania Supreme Court? How many justices serve on the Pennsylvania Supreme Court? What? Who said seven first? It was Jocelyn. That's right. He has seven justices on the Supreme Court and three of them are up for retention questions this year. Make sure that you are reading about these justices because when they go up for retention, they are not partisan. They do not put the RD next to their name. So you have to read and see who's who. Last, yes, very cool, right? Last question. What is the mandatory retirement ages for judges and P A? What is the mandatory retirement age? And we actually voted on this not too long ago. So this should be up. Anybody know? Child, let me look at my thing. Nine, nine? None? Hold on, let me look. Don't, don't get me to, that is crazy, but it might be right. But it might be right to be, to be quite honest. I had to ask, um, I had to ask, uh, somebody to give me the answer to this, so I'm not going to hold you on that. What is it? Death? Well, does your Supreme Court is death? Yeah. Your Supreme Court is death. Um, let's go here. Hold on. Hold on. Oh, well, she didn't put the answers. Nobody, I had nobody with the answers in there. That's fine. Um, oh, here it is. Lies. We have answers. Uh, hold on. Here we go. Get to my copywriter. There we go. Ooh. Um, I don't know. Somebody look it up. I lost it. That's okay because nobody won because she got one and he got one. So nobody, so everybody lost. I mean, you, I mean, you're all winners. The other way around. You're all winners. Yeah, it is seventy-five. I thought I had it wrong. So I didn't want to get the answer wrong. Um, bonus question, bonus question, and maybe we can win. How, how many, at what intervals are our commissioners elected? At what interval? Wrong, wrong. What else? Four and two. Thank you. Yes. Yes. Nobody gets it. So that's four. So everybody got one, 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 but the point of that is we don't, we don't know all the things we should be knowing. What'd you say, Ralph? He did, but nobody won. Everyone, I'm sorry. Wrong. Bad language. Everyone won. What? What'd you say? What'd you say? Ralph has, no, Ralph has two. Jocelyn have one, Basser have one and Ralph have one. They want Ralph to win real bad. You know what I'm saying? Also shout out to Rob Lawson. He's in, he will be on the show coming up. Also running for city council. So we will have all the candidates on the show. Okay? Um, so this is last lap. Thank you guys for coming tonight. I am so pleased to have such a wonderful slate of guests tonight, wonderful slate of candidates. And we're going to keep exploring. We want to give everyone a voice here at the Black Men's Beat. As I, oh, because, oh, here at the Black Men's Beat, it is your news and your voice, your way. Okay? So we want you to have that. And as I say, every show, be kind to yourself, love for yourself, clap for yourself. Because you are what makes the community great and we need each one of you to keep doing that. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you and good night.
You may shoot me with your words. You may cut me with your eyes. You may kill me with your hatefulness, but still like life, I'll rise.
I refuse to accept the view that mankind is so tragically bound to the starless.